We'll have Councilman Allers give a prayer and then I'll lead us in pledge of allegiance and we'll get the meeting started.
Your Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings daily with which you bless us and bless us with the ones we need and not what we want. We ask for peace and calm and vision for doing what is best for the City of Jefferson. We ask for your guidance to thought and actions we pursue. We thank you for protecting the brave men and women who put their lives on the line to protect far and away and here at home. And we ask for protection of our current president and whoever the future president and their families may be. Keep their families safe. For all the intentions of the people here gathered and for our families and people in the City of Jefferson, answer them, Father in heaven. Give them the guidance, the calmness and the peace they so deserve. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America. I do agree, God, that we're one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Do a roll call.
Allers.
Present.
Hamilton.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Neely.
Present.
Schwartz.
Spencer.
Here.
Spicer.
Present.
Young.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, you have the amended agenda before you. Want me to approve that agenda?
It's approved.
Get a motion from.
Second.
And Spicer.
Second.
Councilwoman Young. Call a favor.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Miscellaneous items. One of the fun things we get to do. Recognize the Kevin Mineheart Award recipient and appreciate Councilman Lickle and Lester who also signed on. Mr. Durk, you want to come to the podium? I don't know. Councilman Lickle, you worked with.
(Inaudible).
Do you have a, Ms. Perry, do you have a presentation?
I just want to give.
Did I skip over something?
I just want to give a little background on the Kevin Mineheart. For distinguished public.
I just wanted to see if you'd come.
Thank you.
Ms. Perry, would you all give a background on the Kevin Mineheart Award?
Kevin Mineheart served on the Jefferson City Board of Adjustment from 1997 to 2012. Kevin demonstrated his lifelong commitment to public service and continually represented the highest standards in ethics and professionalism. The employees of the City of Jefferson, the mayor and city council expressed their gratitude for the example Mr. Mineheart set and thus the Kevin Mineheart Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service was born. Nominations could be submitted by any member serving on a city board, committee or commission, including any staff liaison or city council member, and the candidate selected displays public service devotion, excellence and professionalism, outstanding enthusiasm and reflects the highest ideals of citizenship and their conduct. So the 2024 recipient is Chris Durin. And I'd like to invite the two council members that made the nomination to make any statements that they might have.
This is where we were. Councilman Lickle. I'm the recipient here.
There's quite a few folks in the City of Jefferson that would be qualified and well deserved of this award. But when I saw it come through and having a little bit of familiarity with it before, I couldn't think of a better person that would represent this family and this award and what she's done for our community in multitude of ways. So I'm very honored to have been part and recommend her. So congratulations.
About my list?
Yes, I likewise echo those comments and I'm very happy to nominate Chris for this award for outstanding service to the community. I mainly interact with Chris at the Eastside Business Association and she always brings such enthusiasm and joy to her work in order to report on the certification or the scholarship committee from that committee or as liaison for the schools. She brings that enthusiasm and joy and just I think uplifts all of us. You know, I want to mention something else that wasn't in our form, but I think many of us know of her daughter as Elza speaking and funds activities and different projects and service in the community. And I just think that she is certainly deserving of recognition for helping to prepare and raise future leaders of our community. Thank you, Chris.
I'll add mine. I've known you since before I was involved here at the city and you have done a great job in everything that you've done. So thank you very much. I appreciate Councilman Lickle and Lester bringing your name forward. I think it was a pretty easy decision for the committee that took a look at it. We appreciate all that you've done for our community and will do. I know you've got a lot of ideas. You are a great member of our Parks Commission, so thank you for that work. So I'll allow you to make some comments and then we'll see if any other council members have any comments.
I'm going to keep my words few because I would last longer than all y'all getting ready to share. But I just wanted to say thank you so much. I was able to meet Kevin's family back here and I'm honored and humbled to be recommended and to receive this award. It's just something you do is serve your community. And so I don't think I do anything out of the ordinary, but I just wanted to say thank you and I appreciate it so much.
I know you recognize some folks from the Mineheart family. Does anybody want to come up and say anything about the award, the family or? You just identify yourself for the folks at home, but we appreciate you being here.
Just here?
Yep, the whole room's a microphone.
I'm sending Mineheart, Kevin's wife, and this is my daughter, Polly. And we had the blessing of meeting you just a few minutes ago. Every year this is, it's very joyous, it's bittersweet because we miss him so much. But when we find someone that has served our community the way we have, it just brings us joy. So congratulations.
Want to make any comments?
No.
You would just stay there. Is any other council members, Councilman Spicer, Councilman Spencer?
Chris is a great asset to the community and good hard worker. I got to work with her a little bit over at LC and she really works hard and, you know, we need more people like you, so thank you.
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, I've known your entire family for a very, very long time through our service, through our church at Memorial Baptist Church. And I know that with your new church that she's very involved along with her husband and kids at the youth program at Baptist Church. But I don't want to put her on the spot, but.
But.
But. Would you mind showing us some moves?
No, no.
She has a past career of being a very good instructor in.
Taekwondo.
Taekwondo. So don't mess with her.
I learned that lesson.
Thank you for your service to our community.
You want to come up? I'll come down. The plaque that says, you know, presented to Christina Durin in grateful appreciation of your volunteer service to the City of Jefferson 2024. Do a picture with the four of us and council needs a little practice and blading again. We haven't done it for a while. We'll ask council to come up. We'll get a quick picture and.
My husband Justin's doing it. Oh, okay. We gotta make ready. Yes.
We could be squeezing.
Do we got everybody?
We're good.
You're going to see a break. One, two, three. One more. Thank you so much.
All right, it takes us to item five on the agenda, opportunity for public comment. Ask our attorney, Mr. Moleman, to just make some general comments and then we'll go. We've got three people signed up, so.
Just wanted to give a reminder to the council that these public comment sessions are really an opportunity for the community to give input to the city council. Part of tonight's meeting, we are anticipating some people to bring up some information that is regularly private. The city council should be aware of some limitations of privacy law and I'm giving advice that engaging in back and forth conversation on private information is not in the city's best legal interests. And so I just need to give comment to the city council, but not to use the conversation as the risk of accidentally or inadvertently violating privacy laws is, I think, is too great. That's all I have.
All right, we'll go to the list. Mr. James Noah, Local 671. Brought some friends with you. Thanks, guys, for being here. If you could just identify yourself for the folks at home and we appreciate you being with us.
Yes, sir. My name is James Noah. I'm president of Local 671 Jefferson City Firefighters. Come to you all tonight to discuss past actions on city benefits. I don't think any of this was private information at this point because the action has already been taken. And my comment tonight is over the cafeteria plan reduction. So for most everybody that knows me knows I've been into labor for a few years now and I think we got a couple of council members that are past labor members or labor board members. And I can say that most everybody would agree that the interest of labor very much is benefits, wages and safety. With the reduction of the cafeteria plan, it had a negative impact not only on my members, but roughly, I believe, from conversations was roughly 80 city members, city employee members. That directly adversely affected wages coming home to those members. And I can understand the financial implications we have with the healthcare system. I can appreciate that as somebody that's been in labor here for a while and I know that we're building back on that and I don't know what the right answer is. But what I can tell you is a reduction of benefits to city employees without conversations ahead of time is a poor practice. We have roughly probably 20 members that are eligible for retirement in the next two to two and a half years. And I think Councilman Lester spoke last meeting and I appreciate him staying that hopefully with those benefit reductions, they could go back to employee wages. I don't have faith in that. I don't have faith that those wages are coming back. I have faith that they're allocated somewhere else, whether it's to get us out of the financial crisis that you all construe that we're in. I don't know because I wouldn't afford those conversations. What I can tell you is just like Councilman Lester said, we've always prided ourselves as we may not be at the top tier pay, but we've always had great benefits. We reduced two benefits in this last few months. The tuition reimbursement prior to budget cycle and then cafeteria plan post-budget cycle. I got members back here that were adversely affected by the cafeteria plan reduction. That's roughly $4,000 not going to the home to those members that participated in it. If you look at those same members, we roughly get a $900 a year pay increase. And if you categorize that to 2,912 hours of work per year, that is about a 30 cent pay increase on average for every city firefighter right back there. Now, if you take that same $4,000 and divide it by the 2,912 hours that are worked, that is roughly a $1.37 pay decrease for those members that are affected right there. And I'm talking about those members, but I'm talking about city members as a whole. I can appreciate where we're at and I can appreciate conversation, but I can guarantee you the fundamental actions of labor and the house of labor is the bargaining in good faith on city benefits, city wages and city safety. And after that, I yield the rest of my time.
Thanks. All right, next signed up is Megan Dudenhofer. If you could just identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Megan Dudenhofer. I'm sure you all know me by now. My husband Ryan works for City of Jefferson's through J.C. Parks. I think in the first meeting that Ryan initially had that some of you might not be aware of back in July, I think Ryan, you asked if Ryan had any other questions and then Ryan said, no, but you just wait until you meet my wife. And then Sheila, you said, bring it on. And so I'm here to bring it tonight and I'm going to let everybody know what they've been up to behind your back because I think you guys are missing some really key information of what's happening behind closed doors that you're maybe not aware of. But before I go any further, I want to tell you a little bit about my backstory. This is my son Grady. This is Grady. Grady is almost 13 years old. He loves the Kansas City Chiefs. He can spout off any fact left and right about them. He loves his two golden retrievers. He loves hunting and fishing, riding around the farm on his four wheeler. He's crabby every single morning when he wakes up. He's a picky eater. He is funny as all get out, though. He's also the most driven and determined person I have ever met. He's got a sensitive heart and a sharp mind. He really is the coolest kid. But Grady would be none of these things without the medication that keeps him alive. Because you see, Grady was diagnosed with Pompeii disease when he was six months old. Pompeii disease is a rare genetic disease that's caused by a missing enzyme and without this enzyme, his body can't break down glycogen. And that glycogen stores in his muscles and it breaks down his muscles. So every single muscle in his body is affected, his heart, to his tongue, to his eyelids, to his skeletal muscles. Without medication that Grady's on, Grady would not have lived past the age of one years old. By God's amazing grace, Grady was placed into the hands of quite possibly the best doctor I've ever met who saved his life. We would have never got to experience all of the wonderful things that Grady offers this world without the medication that he's on. Grady receives life-saving drug biweekly through his IV, through IV infusion. This infusion takes seven hours total. He was recently approved for a new drug called Nexvizyme. We thought very hard for that new drug and it's showing amazing results in both children and adults. And before that, Grady received infusions of a drug called Lumizyme that he was on weekly. So instead of biweekly infusion that he getting now, he was getting them weekly, seven hours a day for one day a week, he was sitting and having to get this infusion just to stay alive. This past July, Ryan, as many of the city know him as Dude, was pulled into a meeting led by Sheila Perry and Ryan Moleman. And in that meeting, Ryan was told that Grady was costing the City of Jefferson too much money through their healthcare plan and even stating, I quote, "A majority of the claims was from your dependent." And they had been watching these claims for a couple of years. They said, and I quote again, "There was a decision made by city leadership and they would like him and Grady to go to a voluntary program called We Care." I was unable to come to the meeting that day because Grady had an infusion. And when we asked about phone numbers, websites and anything, we were only given one number and from that one number, no one would call us back. No one would answer our phone calls and no one would call us back. I finally did my own digging and found out that Grady's medication would in fact not be covered, not one single dime, nothing. None of his medication would have been covered.
If I could just interrupt you just one second. We do have a four-minute time limit. If council is comfortable, we'll extend that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We found out that the medication would not be covered because these drugs were sourced from Canada and Grady's drug has only one manufacturer and it does not come from Canada. The woman that the city had consulted with never returned our phone calls, but when she finally did, she did confirm that they did not have access to the meds. She then sent an email to city admin in which Brian Crane responded, "We seeked legal counsel to make sure it was done right." It was dropped, but a mother's gut always knows when something is brewing. So we sat back and we watched from afar knowing it was only a matter of time. And here we are. And I'm not going to lie and tell you that we haven't had our problems with insurance. We have. It's just part of the rare disease package. There's things that a parent, you should never have to fight for and it's something, healthcare is something you never want to have to fight for. But I'm not afraid to fight and I'm not afraid to call insurance companies and so we've always made it work. But this is a whole new level. This is a whole, whole new level that we've been put at. And so now that this Quantify, you know, when I got, when I saw the news press release this afternoon, I honestly, I was speechless. I couldn't believe it and I knew exactly why it was done and I, you know, you state in the press release that Quantify backed out. Quantify has decided that they will not be entering into agreement, but in fact, you're lying to the City of Jefferson, the citizens of the City of Jefferson because I talked to Quantify at 4:00 PM on Friday afternoon and they didn't have a contract with you. There was no contract. So the City of Jefferson backed out. So maybe you need to amend your press release and state the facts. And the severe public backlash and overwhelming external criticism is actually very much, it was expected. When you, if you were in my position, if you had a child at home that required a high costing drug, what would you do? You just sit back and would you just let somebody take away your healthcare that kept your child alive? I mean, I think the decision is simple that you would fight for it. And that's what, you know, Quantify, I talked to the owner of Quantify on the phone and, you know, I told her, I think she probably does have a legit business happening, but it's so new, it's so brand new, she couldn't, she didn't even know the cost of the drug. You're claiming that in this, in this press release that you're going to, that this prevents the city from accessing millions of dollars, but in fact, you don't even know that is a true statement because when I talked to Quantify, she didn't even know, one, the name of the drug that my son is on, two, the cost that he was on. So how can she say she's going to save you millions? How can you say that you're going to be saved millions if you don't even know the cost of the drug? I can't begin to tell you how disheartening all of this is. And the fact of the matter is, the principle of it all is that none of it should have even happened. And it's happened not just once, but it's happened twice now. And actually, I think Ryan Moleman, I think you said that in the meeting, you said that We Care was your best, your first best option, but you've had a lot of first bad options is what you said in the thing. So now that shows me that there was obviously lots of other options as well. So you've been trying to fix a solution, which is get us off of your healthcare plan from the beginning. So the question, thing is, is Grady should never have, Grady should have access to the same coverage as everyone else, no matter his, no matter, no matter what. Everybody should have the same coverage across the board. He shouldn't be singled out because he has a high costing drug. He's a child, any person, not let alone a child, no matter the cost. He's a human being that deserves access to quality and reliable healthcare, just like everyone else. He just happened to be born with an incurable disease he has no control over. And the fact that the city continues to blame us, blame us for the mistakes and blames it on the cost of my child's drugs is sickening. Ryan and I were both raised in Jefferson City. I'm a, I teach our Jeff City schools. We, we chose to make our life here. We didn't want to leave. We love Jeff City and it's just, it's just so sickening that this is how we're rewarded for all the things we give back to our community. It's just so wrong. So my advice is to take a good look at your city administration and I bet if you do some digging, you'll find the problems and you might even find some solutions. And the fact that the council members were told not to speak to us speaks volumes because I had a lot to say. I still have a lot to say. And you knew we had a lot to say. You knew we had a lot to say and you're covering it up. If councilmen weren't allowed to speak to us, then why were they allowed to find and go behind, out of session and find out information to city employees? Why were they allowed to go out and ask the community about us way back in July? All your press releases are just trying to cover your tracks. You've been trying to remove us from city insurance to fix your problem since February of '24 and y'all know it. Thanks for letting me speak and thanks for letting me tell my story and if you want to hear more about it, you know where to find me.
We appreciate you being here. It's the public comment period.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if I can ask a question related to some of the public comment, like to staff.
Public comment period.
Okay. When in this meeting would that be an option?
Public comment period. We have another individual that wants to speak to council.
I'll wait.
We'll move on to the next agenda item because this is the public comment period and maybe others will. If you just identify yourself.
Sure.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jody Leighton Brinker and I'll probably go quite over, not too much over four minutes, but I was appointed by the previous administration and served as the county resident position to the Human Relations Commission for the city and held that position of vice chair until I resigned on September 5th of this year. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Trica. Which is why I am addressing the council tonight, especially tonight, as we, a community, are gathered with some serious and some several, and several questions from you. Mr. Fitzwater, I apologize, Mr. Mayor Fitzwater, I have a few questions for you this evening and I'd like and appreciate if you would please indulge me and the rest of us in the room. Let me first preface, I wanted to make sure that I had my facts correct before I addressed you tonight, so not to waste anyone's time. I confirmed you were the president of the Board of Directors for the Council of Drug-Free Youth, which is a local nonprofit organization in our community. It is also true that you are the chief executive officer for the Missouri Pharmacy Association and have held that position since 2002. Are both of those statements correct, Mr. Mayor?
Correct.
Thank you. I appreciate you answering. Now allow me to continue as to what my purpose is. On the same night of my resignation, September 5th, the Human Relations Commission held a speakers event. It was the first event that this commission had held in years. The event was on the topic of substance abuse disorder previously referred to as addiction. On that night, I was able to secure all harm reduction partners in our community, treatment locations in our community, sober living programs, as well as several speakers in which they are in no particular order. Program director of a local treatment program here in our town, our county treatment court judge, a representative from the CDC Foundation who is a harm reduction analyst of the Midwest region, who is also a resident. She apologizes she could not be here tonight or her name would be right after mine. A story from a family who lost a child to an overdose and their struggles that they're, that they went through with their son and the storage of managing their grief after the loss. A story of someone who has been in recovery for nine years. Then there was Eric Hoy, director of city, or director of county EMS. In my personal opinion, should not hold that position. He followed my partner with the CDC and how she spoke on the effectiveness of Narcan and other harm reduction efforts. He was then to give Narcan training and discuss the impacts of substance use within our community. Instead, he downplayed the epidemic our community is facing, just like every other one in the nation, making a comment that only about 100 or so fatalities, he couldn't really tell us, have happened in our community. Let me make this very clear to everyone in this room, every one of us. There were at least 100 people present in that room that night. So each. So each one of us represented a lost life. Then he quickly gave an overview of how to administer Narcan and then again proceeded to discourage people from using it and just call 911 and wait. Now this is where you, Mr. Mayor, and you, Mr. Ryan Mulhan, the legal counsel of the city of Jefferson, come into this conversation. Why, gentlemen, was I told that absolutely no Narcan could be in the event space and it was not to be offered to those in attendance? Anybody? Okay. I think you, especially Mr. Mayor, and now the city-
I just stopped you one second. This council comfortable with additional time?
I appreciate you. I think you, especially Mayor and the city administrator, I know that you both do your due diligence. Both of you know that if Narcan is administered to anyone who's not experiencing an overdose from an opiate, it has zero effect on them, but it could potentially and most certainly save their life. But it's no different than water if it's not given to someone who's an overdose or unconscious from an opiate. Why? There was no possibility of liability to the city of Jefferson. I need and expect an answer tonight and I'll give you a moment to respond. I went around your ridiculous disregard for the residents of this community and I brought in a friend from St. Louis who manned a table across the street with a large sign that said, "Free Narcan, Together We Can Save Lives." We handed out 75 boxes of nasal dose, nasal double dose, double doses, 27 doses of intramuscular, several fentanyl strips, resource information and so on. Our first person who stopped was an on-duty Jefferson City police officer and more followed, all taking some of our Narcan, of which you have funding for, for their duty vehicles. Resident assistance from LU to keep on hand with more students who came down afterwards. People driving by and of course, those in attendance. Why did you not want to protect your community or give someone a chance at another day of life? Or potentially a day of treatment? Since we're all here tonight discussing many changes that are affecting our residents, employees and so many families due to our city's government's poor choices and listening to the horrific story of the Dudenhofer's family's nightmare, I find this one to be the perfect time to point out what seems to be, what we're going through, all of us right now. Why does the city administration not value life? As you look at me, I am the face of the mother who lost her son to the overdose five years ago today. Look at me. I represented everyone in that room that night who was fighting for their lives or the lives of someone they loved. It was my son's story. His name was Trevor Dale Branson. I told his story and I lived with his grief. Mr. Mulman, my son was in a gap year between law school undergrad and pre-law. He was getting ready to go to SLU. That could have been you. So if it could have been you, it couldn't be anybody. It could have been my son. It could be any one of us. Shame on both of you because I'm pretty sure there's no one else in this council, maybe aside from Trica, who knew what went down. As I pray, and that's not something I do, maybe I should, I don't know. I pray that the residents of Jefferson City, which this administration has no intention of making the best decision for you. It is reflected in the next election.
Thank you very much for your comments. Alright, that's all that we had signed up for the public hearing, public comments. So that takes us to item six, public hearings, which are none. Seven appointments by the mayor, none. Presentations from staff, consultants and invited guests. And we've invited our superintendent, Mr. Brian McGraw. If you introduce yourself and thank councilmember Allers, Spencer and Spicer who joined me to invite you. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Hi, I'm Brian McGraw, superintendent of Jeff City Schools. It's my third year as superintendent. I just want to yearly come by and give you an update on some of the things that we're doing for the kids and community. Just an update on where we're at. Eighty-five hundred students, pre-K through 12. Graduate around 600 students every year. We're one of the top employers in our area. Fifteen hundred staff members, 900 certified educators. And obviously a big square miles that we take up, but also eighteen school buildings, a technology center, performing arts center and what will be a pre-K building going up on the Lewis and Clark campus right now. See if I get this right. There we go. JC School's champions. We believe in a championship atmosphere. We currently have 1,400 students enrolled in 40 pre-AP and AP classes. That's Advanced Placement Program by the College Board. We've made great progress in that over the last several years. Back in 2019, we had 86 students pass an advanced placement exam and through the years, it's gone from 112 to 128 to 263. Last year, 324 and this past summer, we got the results for this class. We have 446 students pass an advanced placement exam. So super impressive, our students and our staff taking the challenge to have these college level courses. Fifty-one students out of 51 passed the AP Calculus exam at Capital City High School. The nationwide pass rate is 60%. We're at 100 at Cap City. So great progress in the program. Seventy-eight students were AP scholars. That's kids who passed three or more advanced placement exams during their time in our schools. And we have several national merit finalists this school year currently. Graduation rates for the third consecutive year were in 90% and that's the highest in 30 years. We have Nichols Career Center going on and expansion that I'll show you some pictures of that's been in the paper recently. Our culinary programs rated in one of the top programs in the, in the nation. Athletic programs with the five final fours last year. And most recently, the Lady Jays volleyball team will be competing down in Cape this week, going to another final four. So back-to-back final four. So fingers crossed on the, the ladies to have some success down there. Jefferson City High School's been named one of America's best high schools for the second year in a row and that is based on advanced placement scores, state testing and graduation rate. We have Thorpe Garden STEM Academy, which opened up last school year. You see our students in uniforms. We've had a great increase in, in success there at Thorpe. Newly renovated building. You can see some of the pictures displayed. And then some of the things we're doing for our staff. Recruitment and retention is as important as ever. We've had back-to-back years of having the highest salary increase in the last 15 years in the history of the scale. We have 500 teachers participating in a career ladder program. That is teachers who work outside the school day, tutoring, a club, can earn as much as $5,000 and that's a program sponsored by the district and state. Proposition, proposition Kids First was supported April 4th, 2023, 68% of the vote. And we appreciate your support in this room. It was an $85 million bond initiative. Our campaign chairs are listed there, John Landware, Ashley Freeman and Joni Henderson. And we went to work right away. Projects, main project being the Early Childhood Center. And I'll show you some of the things that we have done. So spring 2023, we designed and developed the Early Childhood Center. It will be opening in August of next school year. We had a Nichols Career Center expansion, which opened this school year. That's our cosmetology and building trades building. We had technology upgrades in every classroom, paid off our energy loan. And that was in the summer or spring of 23. Summer of 24, we renovated Bel Air and opened those, that building. It's a beautiful building, renovate it. If anyone wants to drive by and see it or stop in, we could show it to you. It's gorgeous. They put a car rider line in the back, a road to get people off the streets and be cooperative with the neighbors in that area. And then our Early Childhood Center. Obviously, we're looking to double the capacity of the Early Childhood Center. We know that the sooner we get kids, the better they will be in life. So we're, we're excited for it to open shortly. This was the draft of the picture of the building. And that's how it would look off of McCarty and then Lewis and Clark Drive and the kind of the football field there, sitting up to the right of Lewis and Clark. Does the shape of a river, so to speak, and each pod has different themes from the mountains all the way down through the ocean. And the graphics are going to be amazing for the kids and staff. And that's kind of the inside of it. And then that's what it looks like currently. We have brick on the back of the building and the one wing. That is the front area of the building, the entrance. And then that is where we are closing in one of the current pods. So we're, we're making great progress. We're hoping we have a mild winter so we could keep it, keep it going. And the cosmetology building, that is actually in left center field of the Jeff City baseball field. It's sitting up on the hill. That is the cosmetology side of the building. It is state-of-the-art for our kids to learn. There are 20 students currently in the program that are juniors. And then there will be 40 students in the program next year. They will leave being ready to take the state exam and have a certification to go into the workforce. Thirteen area high schools feed into Nichols, so it is a true community atmosphere. So we're really proud of the work that was done for this building to give our kids a great experience. So I think that's all I got. Phase two will be starting this spring and that is the middle school renovations at both middle schools. They're very large buildings, so we're gonna have to do that over two phases. Spring of '25 and spring of '26. Thank you again for supporting us and, and being great supporters of public education. We appreciate you and thank you for inviting me here tonight.
Thanks for, for the community.
Glad to answer any questions.
Councilman Allers and then Councilman-
Senator McGraw, it's, I live close by the Early Childhood Center and I watch Progress Daily and they've come a long way, it's a spooking dirt. It's exceedingly going fast and all that, so it's very exciting to see what's going on there. I think I was impressed with, I think we met it earlier this, either this spring or early summer, over at, I think it was, uh, Morale Heights, you did a presentation. And you told us about that the kids going through the STEM school wanted uniforms. And I think that gets lost on a lot of people that it was their decision to come up with it. I found that very, just very fascinating and all that. Is there, I'm just curious to follow up on that, how that is working out? I mean, it, it seems like it's a sense of pride that they knew where they were going.
Absolutely. If you go over there on a daily basis, you see the kids, you know, all, all in different, there's different styles of the uniform and they've definitely bought into it. They have their fun days where they have, you know, a Chiefs Day or Philadelphia Eagles Day in my case. But they have, they have themes and different things, but the, the kids and staff have been super supportive.
Dallas Cowboy.
Councilman Spicer, then Councilman Spicer.
I had an opportunity to work with Brian for a couple of years. I, I love the stride of what you're doing for the school district and everything else that's really coming, coming together. And, you know, the car rider line, if you need me to help you a couple more times, I mean, we've been a lot of calls.
We did. I'll call you back.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of things. As a parent of two daughters who, who my youngest is a junior out of Capital City, has benefited from the AP courses. And that is just such a great program, especially for parents that are having to pay for future college tuition. So it's really a shortcut. My oldest went into Warrensburg as a music major, technically as a sophomore. That's how much it cut off her, her degree program for Warrensburg Music Education. Second is Nichols Career Center. I know we probably don't promote it as much because we don't need to promote it. Like you said, we have 14 area high schools that fall into that. And we all know how important workforce development is. And this is a really a great resource that our community has, whether it's Atachi, whether it's, you know, Unilever, all kinds of industry that we have here locally can, can use those resources and that next generation. I'm also really excited about your cosmetology program. Is there anything you can do with this?
They could do something with this too. I'd be happy.
Thank you very much. I'll schedule appointments.
They will be open on Saturdays. The way she explained it, once they, you know, get more hours in, they're basically gonna compete for so many spots so that 40 would compete for the, you know, top 20, so to speak. And then they'd be open on, you know, because part of their training is to work on clients, so it'll be open.
I could use some help there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just again want to say thank you for what you're doing with Jefferson City School District. And I am personally excited about the cosmetology program. I serve as director of State Fair Community College here and so I've been hearing a lot of conversations. But for this community to know that these students will come out and be able to make a livable wage and not have to start at a minimum wage, I'm excited about that. And so I'm just excited to see where it goes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for invitation. Have a great night.
Back in a few months.
Thank you.
Takes us to item AP, Impediments to Fair Housing Draft Analysis Presentation. I think Mr. Smith, you're gonna lead that off?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we do have a consultant with us online, so they'll be giving a kind of a virtual presentation on the analysis of impediments to fair housing. Ms. Rachel Senzi, who's our Neighborhood Services Manager, who's been working with the consultant, is gonna give a really brief kind of overview on the background and required afterwards. So I think she's gonna-
The analysis of impediments to fair housing is mandated because we accept the community development grant fund through HUD. It's in response to Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which is making sure that we don't discriminate in our community towards the housing. And that's not just a government function, but, but across the board. We work with our area board of realtors on fair housing practices. But it is, while it is a requirement that we update our, we call it AI, or Analysis of Impediments, once every five years in conjunction with our consolidated plan, we also wanted to make sure that we are creating another tool for our housing toolbox that we could utilize. So we went ahead and used our CDBG funds for our administrative costs and consulted with our KG. And Ms. Summer Pan is online and she's going to give us kind of a higher level overview of the findings that they found. And then we'd be happy to, to answer any questions. I will note this, this is required to have a 30-day public comment period, which is being kicked off right now. If you want to go to the, the city's website, JeffersonCityVoe.gov, under the news and headlines, you can find a full draft of the plan. And you are allowed to publicly comment on findings of the plan through December 6th of 2024, before we go ahead and come back to counsel before its adoption. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer after. But for now, I'll just turn it over to Summer Pan with our KG.
Welcome.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, councilmembers. Hello, residents of Jefferson City. It's an honor for me to be here tonight to present to you our preliminary findings of the AI Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choices. I'm going to share my screen so you can see my PowerPoint. Are you able to see it okay? Alright, there we go. So this shouldn't take too long. Just gonna, like Rachel said, give you a brief overview of the major findings, why the study stated before this is a HUD requirement for any communities receiving CDBG or home funds. And the goal is to assess any impediments to fair housing choices, especially for protected classes. Here's some major findings. There are eight of them. I'll go over each of them and sort of provide some recommendations, strategies- I'll go over each of them and sort of provide some recommendations, strategies, you know, follow up with those major findings, especially low-hanging fruits that can be achieved fairly easily. So let's jump right in. The first finding we have, or the first impediments we discovered, is there's a lack of unified housing strategies and consolidated information on housing resources. What is positive is that the city has a lot of task forces about housing, housing initiatives, et cetera. However, through stakeholder interviews and also through reviewing the city's website, there seems to be a need for more consolidated efforts to basically tie the different initiative task forces, agenda strategy altogether. There's also a need to communicate with housing service organizations in the community and basically document inventory, what's their housing related services. And also to create a dedicated directory style, housing webpage on the city's website, especially in foreign languages as well, that sort of serve as a central point of resources for the community if anyone wanted to find housing-related resources, finding housing, finding housing assistance, et cetera. They can go to this page and see the links to all the different communications, et cetera. All these three can be low-hanging fruit and can be issued fairly quickly. Oops. The second one is there is a severe shortage of housing coupled with bias against rental housing and affordable housing. This, this speaks more to the production side of housing. This is concluded through data analysis of HUD-related data, also other HUD-approved and recommended data sources for the AI study, also coupled with stakeholder interviews. So the points to need to have more education of the, within the community of what affordable housing really means. There's right now stigma and biases against it, especially affordable rental housing. Also, it will be great for the city to look into best practices of rental housing and affordable rental housing development, production for other communities. And that could start with, within the city policymakers, et cetera. The third one is there is a presence of discrimination and housing condition problems in the rental housing market, and this speaks specifically to the existing rental housing stock. Again, this is concluded through demographic housing condition analysis, coupled with stakeholder interviews. One low-hanging fruit or easy kind of solution or strategy could include languages that emphasize a provision of discrimination against renters in all housing related regulations and policies, sort of for the city to take a stand, basically stating that they're prohibited, you know, they have to respect renters' rights to fair housing choices. Other strategies more mid or longer term will include contracting a HUD-certified fair housing organization to tackle discrimination and housing condition fair housing issues specifically in the community, increasing regulations targeting rental housing market, expanding the housing repair and rehab programs to also include rental housing, also use light tech or other partnerships with qualified contractors for rehabilitation renovations to improve the housing condition problems among existing rental housing stock right now. The fourth one is there's a, seems to be a lack of local regulatory efforts to reduce various to fair housing options. This is concluded through public policy review and stakeholder interviews. Some, two low-hanging fruits include that update local ordinances to include languages to establish production of source of income. This is the most frequently mentioned topic during stakeholder interviews because right now there's a lot of discrimination against people's source of income. For example, if someone has Section 8 voucher, there can be landlords discriminating against it and decline to take the voucher, et cetera. Also, another strategy includes passing an ordinance to state the heartbeat clause that's not standing in Jefferson City, particularly through a land law certification program to reduce eviction due to pregnancies, which is also very commonly mentioned during stakeholder interviews. That's one of the top reasons behind evictions. Another strategy include overview of the city's existing zoning regulations, housing policies, housing assistance programs, et cetera, and update them accordingly to reduce regulatory barriers. For example, there could be some zoning changes, which you can find out more in the final document online, that there includes some recommendations as to how the zoning, housing policies can be modified to encourage or lower the barrier, regulatory barriers. The fifth one is there are currently challenging fair housing issues, very prominent and prevalent in Jefferson City, and there's an urgent need to increase funding for fair housing education and advocacy, as well as contracting a fair housing service organization. This is concluded through reviewing online real estate websites, listing websites, findings from previous impediments of fair housing analysis, also stakeholder interviews. One low-hanging fruit is that it is important for the city to recognize fair housing and increasing housing supply goes hand in hand. Through stakeholder interviews is frequently mentioned that there's just such an urgent need to produce more housing. Sometimes it is not quite the priority to also tackle fair housing issue, but however, those two issues actually goes hand in hand. If there's no sort of protection or guarantee of fair housing access, then even though new housing stock is produced, it may not serve the people most in need. Other strategies include contracting a HUD-certified fair housing organization. This is also mentioned in previous AI, I believe. The importance of this is that the HUD-certified fair housing organization can serve as an expert in this area. They can do a lot of education, advocacy, referrals, even mediation kind of service that really can serve as a powerhouse to tackle fair housing issues in a city. Also, increasing funding allocation for fair housing, specifically for contracting the housing organization will be important as well. The next finding is there is, seems to be a concentration of minority population in lower-income areas and publicly supported housing neighborhoods, essentially, particularly in the urban core of Jefferson City. And that coincides with limited access to resources and opportunities. This is concluded from reviewing previous AI, stakeholder interviews, and also spatial data analysis using HUD recommending data sources. Two low-hanging fruit kind of strategies include, including detailed language subsifying the need for a diversity of housing types to accommodate various residents of different needs and lifestyles, et cetera. In the comprehensive plan, it's important for the comprehensive plan to recognize and have the specific language to detail that, sort of for the city to take a stand on this issue. Also, it will be important to translate the comp plan and its website into other languages, such as Spanish, in order to enable, you know, residents with different language skills or preferences to also review and participate in the housing issue and planning process of the city. Other strategies include zoning incentives and building partnership for community investment services amenities in the urban core area where most of the concentration of minority population and limited access to opportunities occur. This will include like, including zoning modifications to provide financial or kind of density incentives for developers to also contribute to investing in communities and services. Also, increasing quality of affordable housing option in other parts of the city. It's also very important to kind of diversify the geographic location of affordable housing or housing affordable to normal people like the working class, like firefighters, nurses, et cetera. And not to only limit kind of housing choices within certain areas in the city will be very important. The seventh finding we have is there seems to be racial, ethnic disparity in homeownership access. This is concluded from the spatial data analysis and stakeholder interviews. One strategy again is contracting a HUD-certified fair housing organization. And this really speaks to, I know that this is repeated a lot of times, but this really speaks to the importance of contracting a HUD-certified fair housing organization. So they could really start to tackle this issue because this is probably one of the top frequently mentioned pressing issue, most urgent issue related to housing in Jefferson City throughout stakeholder interviews. The last one will be, there seems to be a limited supply of housing for persons with disabilities. Again, concluded from data analysis, stakeholder interviews. There are three low-hanging fruits, sort of a short-term kind of easy solutions. One is continue to assist community organizations with funding applications for ADA-incompliant housing development. Also, it will be beneficial for the city to learn from best practices, such as one of our past client, City of Norman in Oklahoma, they have recently adopted a visitability awareness, basically requiring different levels of visibility or universal design in new housing development that can be pursued by developers. Also, any new housing production that is funded through home funds have to meet minimum ADA or universal design requirements. Another low-hanging fruit is to expand current ADA building code requirements within the current zoning ordinance and building codes to cover all properties, to require basically all properties to comply or encourage them to comply with ADA building code. Another strategy will be to expand accessibility modification improvement program currently available in the city to cover more residents and to increase the maximum funding thresholds. Right now, I believe the program is only available to low moderate income owner occupied housing, which is also single family. Expanding the program will allow more coverage or more types of housing, including rental housing or multifamily housing, to be assisted through this program so that more people living in all the other types of housing that have disabilities have a chance to, you know, continue to stay in their housing with modifications funded through the program. And that's all from me today, and really thank you for your attention.
Comments? I don't know if there's any questions for.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to, but I'd really like to encourage folks to read the plan and if they have any comments to participate in our open.
Did we tell folks where they can find the plan and how they can film it?
Yes, it's on the JeffersonCityMo.gov. If you go under News and Headlines, there's the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing link, and it'll take you to the link of the plan as well as the email address to send any comments.
I have a question.
There we go.
Thank you. Once they access the plan, are they able to give feedback and, you know, dialogue with it?
Yes, and that would be welcome. And we participate, so when we receive public comments, we will address those comments and then see if they're, and then we'll include them.
All right. Another question. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation.
Yep. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
All right. Takes us to item 9A, Announcements by Mayor, Council, and Staff. Administration Committee, Councilman Allers.
It would be, the administration meeting this Wednesday, 7:30 a.m. Across the room in the Boone Banker.
Finance Councilman Schwartz is not here. Ms. Perry?
We are scheduled to meet on Thursday, November 21st at 7:30 a.m. Across the hall in Boone Bancroft.
All right. Public Safety, Councilman Michael.
And Ms. Mayor will also meet on November 21st, that Thursday, at 4 o'clock in the police training room.
And Councilman Spencer, Public Works.
We'll be meeting next week, next Thursday at 7:30 here in the council chambers.
Item 9B, St. Gethfield. Burning season.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick, couple reminders for folks, you know, as we enter into the annual time where we do allow burning within the city. Things that are allowed to be burned on someone's personal property are small branches, sticks, leaves, grass flipping. Things that are not allowed to be burned are any sorts of trash, cardboard, plastics, building materials, any sort of land clearing, large tree stumps, large limbs that are over four feet long and six inches in diameter. Couple other reminders, wall fires must be out by dusk at night, and they must be attended at all time with a means of extinguishment. We will write tickets for people that are non-compliant. We try to work with the public, try to educate them first, but at the same time, we would ask that everybody try to be a good neighbor and be respectful of your neighbors who may have their windows open, especially early in the fall. Also a reminder, there is more information at the city's website, a couple of good infograms there, a barcode that you can scan that gives information that we just discussed, and also the location of the city's drop-off yardway site. That is at 708 Ellis Boulevard, open daylight hours seven days a week. And if you have illegal burning to report, you can call the non-emergency number, and that's 573-634.
Can you say that number one more time?
573-634-6400.
All right.
Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thanks, Chief. All right. Any other announcements? Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to also know that I've had the opportunity to participate in the MHDC Open Period Comment for projects that were submitted here in the city. And we're hopeful that we can take work off, we can, for, 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 and I just wanted to thank staff and Mr. Bo West for, for participating in that process. And thank you for all the assistance you threw in as well.
114 applications, is that still accurate?
I believe so, yeah.
All right. We've got two in there, so pushing for our local. All right, that'll take us to item 10, Consent Agenda. You have three items in front of you. We'll need a motion to.
Second.
Speaker, who's Councilman Ozzell, second in, on favor?
I oppose.
All right. Takes us to item 11A, Bills Introduced 2024-046.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri establishing election dates in the City of Jefferson, Missouri for the 2025 general municipal.
Mr. Moll.
Thank you. Every year, we pass an ordinance that establishes the election dates and candidate filing period for municipal general election. 2025 municipal general elections will be held on Tuesday, April the 8th, 2025. Candidate filing opens at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, December 10th, runs through 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 31st. So that's a little bit later than previous years. There's been some change in state legislation, which pushes that candidate filing period back a little bit. So it's a little bit different than what we've seen in previous years. So that's once again Tuesday, December 10th through Tuesday, December 31st. 2024 is the candidate filing period. There are five council member seats open, one in each ward, plus two-year terms for the municipal judge and the city prosecutor. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Seeing none. Item 11B, 2024-047.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, permitting Chapter 19, litter vehicles and traffic, schedule in parking weekends. And schedule R, reserved parking areas by the modification of the 300 block of Adams Street.
Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. This would clean up, as Clerk indicated, some parking around the new EMS building across the street from us here. They'd be designating two spaces for official vehicle parking next to that facility and kind of cleaned up some of the other code around that related to parking from the construction.
Seeing no questions. Item 11C, 2024-048.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $110,089 construction contract with Weathercraft Incorporated for roof replacement of the south building RWRF project.
Mr. Morris. Thank you. As Clerk indicated, a, a construction contract for a new roof over at the wastewater treatment plant, south building, the, it's with Weathercraft, fairly local contractor here we've done business with in the past. This would be paid out of wastewater funds. And we have to answer any questions.
Seeing none. Item 11D, 2024-049.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Don Schneider's excavating company in the amount of nine hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Monroe, Monroe Street, six hundred through seven hundred block, project three, two, one, eight, four.
Mr. Morris?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, construction contract with Don Schneider's for almost a million dollars. It's a joint city-county project. We've talked about this, uh, quite a bit in the past. Uh, we have a, uh, developed essentially an inter-local agreement with the county on this project that they would be paying half the cost. The city staff designed the project. Uh, new signal there at the intersection of Monroe and Dunkland. Yeah, all the latest upgrades and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Miller?
Thank you. Uh, what's the budgeted amount for this project?
I think it was one point one total. Something close to about that. It's my recollection.
And right now, the cost from Don Schneider's is nine hundred and some thousand.
Just under a million, nine hundred and seventy thousand.
In which the city and county would split, correct? So it's five hundred, five hundred?
Yes, roughly.
But we, in the, the one point one was budgeted for that split or just for the city portion?
No, it was, it was budgeted as the split.
The money split, okay. I know I've received some feedback on the, uh, document that was sent out this week as to, you know, kind of, the, the scale of this project and why we're, why we're not gonna, uh, you know, put up full retaining walls and taking out one sidewalk and kind of making a little piecemeal project out of it. But I've, I've also had some other, uh, concerns too, so, I mean, can you elaborate on that a little bit? Did that come down to cost?
Yeah, uh, essentially, uh, when we look at a project, we budget a certain amount of money for it, and then as they go through the design of the project, our staff, uh, we try to, try to stick to the budget, uh, best we can. Now, if there was some thing we need to go over a little bit, we'd certainly alert the council of that and see if we are, go ahead and bid it and see what the bids come in at. Uh, in this case, uh, there's some discussion about the, uh, bluff that joins the school property. It'd be on the east side of the, the roadway there. It's a very tall bluff. Here's a big retaining wall already existing in the, uh, office building Bartlett West engineers is located in. So you can kind of see the scale of that. Uh, we did go out and get facing that bluff. Uh, our, our engineering, we got an engineering estimate back for the engineer cost alone over two hundred and fifty thousand. And so that, that implies well over a million dollar just to face the bluff. We thought that wasn't really within the scope of what this project was. You know, the original contract was, or the original thought was to have a new, uh, new updated intersection there, new, new signal. And so what we have is it ties into the, the MODOT portion near the highway, and it'll have a, a nice sidewalk along the entire, uh, uh, western side of the street, all tied in. On the, on the, uh, eastern side where the bluff is, we'll do an offset of the bluff, about eight feet. Uh, there'll be a wall, a permanent wall to catch any falling rock that may occur or whatever. And the reason it's offset eight feet is so we can drive a piece of equipment in there and pick up that rock. But to go ahead, now, it doesn't preclude if the council in the future, or whoever wanted to spend an extra million and a half to face that, that, that could still be done, but it didn't seem prudent with this project to obviously overdouble the budget just to do that little piece when, uh, we can redirect all the intersection traffic, foot traffic, to the one side, so.
Thank you. And during construction, do we have any expectation what roads, uh, will be closed? I mean, it may be hard to tell, but we'll, at, so let me ask this. So at times, will, will Monroe be completely closed there? Uh, we got some businesses who, I think, have kind of their sole access, uh,
There'll always be.
Easy access on Monroe. So can you tell us a little bit about access during construction, right?
Well, we would always maintain a, some level of access if there's a business or a house or something there throughout the construction. Might be periodic closures, that kind of thing. Uh, but certainly, if there's an active, uh, you know, residence or a business there, it, it certainly have to be maintained. But that doesn't mean that if we're redoing their drive approach, they may not be able to drive right into it. Uh, but for a few days, but of course, we'd have to put the concrete stuff.
Councilman West?
I appreciate, uh, the recent descriptions that were provided. Now, I don't, I don't leave, uh, public works in planning, we receive those and, I think it would have been helpful also to have, have, uh, pictures and schematics of how this might look. I don't want, certainly don't, don't want to delay this. It's been delayed so long. But I know what's been described, I think, uh, certainly losing sidewalk and, uh, uh, not, anything with the, with the facing walls is going to be, uh, disappointment to many in the community. So I don't, and also, I, I don't think in public works in planning, we, we ever heard described about the cost, which is certainly very important. I guess I'm just, uh, lamenting, uh, that, uh, we didn't have, uh, more information at public works in planning. I guess I know that I'll have a question.
Where are the comments?
Well, I may, I would just ask why that was.
Uh, well, the scope of the project was to do the intersection project and take care of the walls as we could. Uh, and so we often, not every detail of any project is brought through this whole body. There's a design process that happens that would considerably slow this up. It's been fairly long coming as is, it could be, uh, discussed at these committee-level meetings. But every little detail of that, uh, you give us a budget and a direction and we proceed. And that's how all these projects actually work.
Do you typically get a schematic on a project this size?
Uh, I think we've talked about the cross-section. We don't do a rendering or anything like that. This is an engineering project. So a lot of people, um, don't get a lot of value out of it that, uh, that aren't used to looking at them. But we certainly have them available, uh, all the time. We can work back on it later, whatever you'd like. Uh, to keep the projects moving, you know, uh, there has to be decisions made as, as we go and, and always with a budget in mind. That's one of the main factors. We can't, if we did bring in a project that's overdouble what was allotted for it, it really doesn't do anybody any good.
Is that, did the businesses that are, you know, immediately involved or will be impacted by this project, did they receive the document that we got this week?
You went.
The document showing the plan that we received this week as council, did the impacted businesses in the neighborhood receive any of that information?
I'm not aware if they did or not.
So that's kind of beyond us to provide that to them.
Well, I mean, they could always speak with us. I'm sure they, we've been, I'm sure they've been discussing it over the period of design.
That's good.
Councilman West?
So I see in, in the detail that the traffic signal, like, quarter of a million dollars? Is that, is that typical? Is that what traffic signals are going to cost?
Oh, yes. I'm surprised it's that cheap, uh, because it had to be, that's one reason it slows down. They've changed the regulations midstream to add some additional features to a signal. Uh, so it, you know, uh, those who are, are blind can hear the signal now. Everybody can hear it, but they need that. And so some of those things had been updated, so that we had to go back through and make sure we hit all those, uh, hit all those items to make sure it was compliant.
Councilman Ozzleton?
Um, I was also looking here at the rock bluff excavation. What is this bid doing differently versus what everybody else was doing to have such a significant difference between everybody else's excavation costs?
Uh, I'm not sure about your question. You mean various pay items in it?
Right, so they're able to do for twenty-three thousand, two hundred what other bidders were doing up to a hundred and fifty thousand for. What's, what's, what's different?
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly, and we, we don't really know exactly. But what, when we do this, we do look at those to, uh, which item are you looking at exactly here?
Uh, number four, rock bluff excavation.
Yeah, uh, but you see, the next two, they, they're very close together, next three, really. And then, uh, they, of course, our engineer's estimate was higher. But, you know, we don't, we put an estimate on this the best we can. They, uh, but when we, we'll miss the mark occasionally on some of these, of course. Uh, but then we look at the other bids and see if they're all within a similar range. And so that's how they understood the bid to be, and so we think that's a good bid. The other thing we look at, have we ever done work with any of these contractors? Well, the first two, certainly, Don Schneider, Sam Gaines do a lot of work with the city and have a history of good performance. So, uh, you know, their bids are very close together and neither one concerns us that they would do the project and get it done, completed. So this is, uh, part of competitive bidding, uh, we hope to get that cost, uh, the most bid with the best bidder.
Thank you. All right, thanks. Who's item eleven E, twenty twenty-four dash zero five one?
I'm sorry, I read it wrong.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute three grant agreements with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for funding the construction of a new control tower and a reimbursable agreement with FAA for plan review services.
Thank you. Uh, you might remember, a couple meetings ago, we approved a contract with Prost Builders to construct a new airport tower. And, uh, and at that time, we indicated that we don't have all the grant agreements to lock the money into that contract, so they're on hold. Uh, these grant agreements do that. Uh, there's approximately, uh, a little over ten million dollars here in grant agreements and reimbursable agreements here listed. Uh, but this would be the funding to build that tower at the airport. And so, uh, we would ask that there be a checkmark on this. In other words, suspend the rules so it could be approved in one meeting, so we can get these back to the different agencies so they can start processing them and we can move forward. I would, I didn't mention earlier, but we've been talking to, uh, Representative Luke De Meyer's office about a groundbreaking coming up for this project. Uh, they will be in town here at the end of the month, so we'll be trying to firm that up, uh, with other people's schedules. But, uh, he was instrumental in getting these, uh, grants for us, uh, here in Jefferson City. And so we'd like to attend the groundbreaking. But, uh, so that's late, would be later this month, we anticipate, and we have to answer any questions.
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, I request that, uh, based on staff's recommendation, that we suspend the rules on bill twenty twenty-four dash zero fifty.
Second.
Is there any opposition to suspension? I'm going to go ahead and ask the clerk then to read it and we'll get it on the table.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute three grant agreements with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for funding the construction of a new control tower and a reimbursable agreement with FAA for plan review services.
Okay, you have twenty twenty-four dash zero five zero. Are, is there any other comments or questions? All right, we'll do a roll call then.
Allers?
Aye.
Ozzleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Will passes.
All right, twenty twenty-four, now with the oh five one.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a real estate and development agreement with Prestige Worldwide LLC.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, this is a, a bill that would authorize a real estate and development agreement, uh, that would go with, uh, Prestige Worldwide LLC. Uh, so this would be kind of the second awarding of properties that we've had from the East Capital Ave Development, RFP, uh, two eleven Jackson. So if you're familiar, that property does have an existing, uh, two-story brick building. Uh, so that proposal did, uh, indicate that they would be rehabilitating that property. Uh, it was, I think, previously two dwelling units. And the proposal is to, uh, essentially bring those back to use as residential properties. The purchase price as part of that proposal would be twenty thousand, uh, dollars for the property, uh, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? All right, thanks. All right, item twelve, bills pending, we have none. Informal calendar, item thirteen, none. Resolutions, item fourteen, one. Item fifteen, we do need action on the closed session minutes. Motion approved?
Thank you, Councilor.
I just need a note.
On the, on the closed session?
Yes, on the closed session.
Councilman West?
Just note that, uh, there was, needed a correction there on the second motion to amend, to amend the original motion. Uh, that, uh, I made the motion, uh, rather than Councilman Neely, and, and Councilman Neely seconded the motion. That's the only correction.
Is that an editorial change or do you feel comfortable just flipping the, the names as that?
They were just flipped.
We'll make a motion that we accept the motion.
They weren't amended.
Okay.
We, we just did an editorial change.
So we have a motion to accept?
They do have a motion to accept the amendment.
And then a second.
Do we have a second? The Councilman Neely did your second.
Aye.
We'll need a roll call on the minutes for the closed session with those editorial changes.
Ozzleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, new business, we had none. Business?
I have some business, clear.
Did you declare that in the, oh, in the pre-meeting?
No, it just came up since after the pre-meeting.
Did I have to declare it?
Nothing's on the agenda, so.
Has this been shared with everybody?
No, I just had some questions for staff on, uh, the comments we heard about the cafeteria plan and then one question on quantify, if I might be able to ask this.
Why would you not have raised those in the pre-meeting so we could all do it?
Because I just wrote them down during this meeting.
Why would?
It's two questions.
There's nothing on the agenda. I'm going to overrule that.
Let him speak.
That's ridiculous. You shut him down when you tried to ask the question, when she was speaking or after she was done.
State your item that you would like to put on new business.
Um, I wanted to have, I just want to make a comment about the cafeteria plan reduction and then see if there was any feedback from my colleagues.
Hold on.
Uh, you want me to start or?
Yeah, come on, let's go.
Well, I'm waiting for him to.
Okay. Told you to go.
The, this question is for Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry was the, um, it's my understanding, I guess this would just be right or wrong. It's my understanding that the, if you want to call it the cafeteria plan reduction, when we cut it in half, it was already limited for the full amount. Is that true?
It was adopted at the full amount in the twenty-five budget, but was reduced in the resolution that council approved at the last meeting in October.
Oh. It was a bill, I believe. I had, I just wanted to kind of tell my colleagues I had been trying to think through that and had a lot of angst about it because I'm impacting, you know, other people, their livelihoods. And that bothers me, um. I, I don't know where we go from here this year, but, but what I wish I personally would have done, you know, these, these decisions that we made, you know, they're, they're decisions that may decisions that may need to be made, I don't doubt that, but giving folks two months to figure out, you know, how to budget 300 and some dollars that they relied on for however many years, it just, it didn't feel right personally for me. And so one of the things that I've kind of toyed around with is bringing back a bill to fulfill that full amount for 25, and I just wanted to ask, we, we have a new policy, a staff policy now where we can't ask questions, so I'm trying to get it done here, if that's okay with you, but if, this is for you, Mr. Mollman, if we were to bring that back to a full amount, would a subsequent bill do that legally?
The cafeteria plan amendment amended the, the city's cafeteria plan, which was approved by ordinance, so an ordinance can re-amend it.
With a bill to.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that. It's a, it's an ordinance, and so an ordinance can always amend an ordinance.
The answer was yes. Can be adjusted.
And I don't know if any, but my colleagues have any feedback on that. I'll ask my other question real quick and be done. When Quantify contacted the city most recently, how did they contact? Was it via email, or some other way?
This is a question for me?
Whoever would have the answer.
Does that relate to the cafeteria plan?
No, it's not. This is my second question.
Do we have a second new business side?
Yeah. So like, I'm just trying to figure out how they communicated, if they communicated that via email, if they picked up the phone and called you all.
What communication are we talking about?
Communication for them to not want to form an agreement.
What'd he say?
The communication to not want to form an agreement. So that communication, I believe, came to our public information officer. Please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, Molly, but I believe that the individual contacted Molly. I don't know if that was via email or a text.
The information actually originally came to me through a News Tribune reporter that Quantify had contacted them with a statement. Then a representative from Quantify texted me and said, "I reached out to a reporter from News Tribune with this statement." So if you call that an official notification or not, that was the communication that was given off.
I appreciate that information.
We're not going to get into discussion, we've got someone's got the, I'll recognize you, Councilman.
Maybe the council will get a copy of that statement.
He provided it for this afternoon, was the first official, the first statement that came from.
The first part of the city's statement is?
No, a Quantify statement was sent out to, I told him, prior to this meeting that we received around 5:00 PM.
I didn't see that come through, but thank you.
Councilman Hosselton? I, I just want to say it's kind of outrageous that the press would be notified before the council on this matter, and I don't think that's good business. They should have came to us first before us, letting everybody know what we don't know.
I don't think anybody disagrees with you, we've been in serious conversations with them. All right, takes us through new business, unfinished business I'm aware of. Councilwoman Young.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this meeting be adjourned.
Maybe you got one right here.
All in favor? Any opposed?